Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission's February 4th open session meeting. Ms. Costa, would you please take the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Trueblood?
Here, still.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner White?
Present.
Commissioner May?
Sorry, I'm slow. Yes, I'm here.
Yes, Commissioner Argo?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Yep, great.
Here.
Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Present.
Thank you. Also, Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, Director of the Urban Design and Plan Review Division, are also in the meeting today. You do have a quorum, madam.
Thank you. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. And if there is no objection, the agenda is adopted as the order of business. We will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point, I would like to pause for a moment of silence for all of those affected by COVID-19 in our nation and around the world. Thank you. In response to the COVID-19 guidance on public gatherings, NCPC will conduct its meetings online until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting commission business. Votes by the commission will be conducted by roll call. When commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have questions or comments. During deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. Before we proceed with the rest of the agenda, in the absence of a chair, the commission must nominate and vote on who should run the January meeting, which is the second agenda item. So is there a motion?
Oh, move.
And the motion is to...
Allow you to run the meeting, as you said, your words.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's a motion that I vice, as vice chair, run our meeting today that's been moved and seconded. Ms. Costa, can you please take the vote by roll call?
Yes, and I'll...
Say yes or abstain.
Thank you. So the motion was made by Commissioner Dixon, seconded by Commissioner May, I believe is correct. So Commissioners Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
All voting affirmatively.
Well, thank you. The eyes have it. Thank you, fellow commissioners, for electing me to run this online meeting. Agenda item number three is the report of the chairman. So I want to share with you some items that are related to notifications regarding commission members. First, Representative Carolyn Maloney, Chairwoman of the House Committee on Oversight and Government Reform, has informed the commission that Wendy Ginsburg will continue to serve as her first alternate, and Colin Davenport will be her second alternate. Welcome again, Wendy. As a commissioner, we're really glad to have you.
Glad to be back.
Second, thank you. With the change in administration and a new Congress, we have requested that the Secretary of Defense, the Acting Administrator of the General Services Administration, and Chairman of the Senate Committee on Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs designate alternates. Once that is accomplished, we look forward to having them attend the meeting. And finally, we were also notified by the White House that presidential appointees Commissioner Gibson-Worsham and Chairman Paul Dans are no longer on the commission. And with that, I want to move to agenda item number four, which is the report of the Executive Director. So Mr. Acosta. Mr. Acosta, do you want to give your executive director's report?
A recap of agency activities and achievements, including the adoption of new guidelines and our transition to online commission meetings. Given all the changes in our operations due to the pandemic, we are pleased that we have been able to accomplish them much last year, and we thank the commission, stakeholders, and members of the public for your continued commitment and support. Many thanks to our Office of Public Engagement staff for producing this report, and the public will be able to find the 2020 review on our website at www.ncpc.gov. You'll find my written report in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Does the commission have any questions of Mr. Acosta? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is the legislative update. Ms. Skyler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chairperson. I do have one item on which I'd like to report. It's House of Representatives Bill Number 7460. The bill extends through January 24, 2028, the authority of the Peace Corps Commemorative Foundation to establish a commander of work on federal land in the district and its environs to commemorate the mission of the Peace Corps and the ideas on which it was founded. This bill became law on January 5, 2021. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for Ms. Skyler? Hearing none, we will move to item number six, which is the consent calendar. There are two items on this month's consent calendar. The first is to approve preliminary site and building plans for the Joy Evans Therapeutic Recreation Center as submitted by the District Department of General Services. The second item is for approval of final site and building plans for the Vaccine Research Center Laboratory Expansion Building 40A North Tower, submitted by the National Institutes of Health. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar items?
Madam Chair, I would like to move that we accept the consents calendar.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon, is there a second?
I'll second. This is Linda Argo.
Thank you. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion in a second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Dixon made the motion. Commissioner Argo seconded. And with that, Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Thank you. All affirmative?
Thank you. The motion is carried. The item 6A is our review of the final site and building plans for the Arlington National Cemetery Southern Expansion, specifically the revised U.S. Air Force Memorial Entrance. So we'd like to hear from Mr. Hart, who will present this item.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. The Arlington National Cemetery has submitted revised final plans for the Southern Expansion, the Arlington National Cemetery Southern Expansion, Air Force Memorial Entrance. This project was last before you, the commission, in November 2020, at which time you approved nearly all of the design with the exception of this entrance. As a reminder, this project is one of two recent expansions to the cemetery in the last few years. The other one is the Millidium Expansion, which is shown here. The commission approved it in 2015, and construction was completed, and it opened in 2019. The Southern Expansion Site, which is approximately 70 acres, is also shown in this slide, and it is located just on the southern portion of the 624-acre cemetery property. The ANC noted this expansion will increase the cemetery burial capacity by 40,000 to 60,000 first interment spaces. And I'll just note, first interment refers to the first member of a family laid to rest at one of the burial spaces in the cemetery. This is the final site plan that you approved back in November 2020. All of the elements have remained. This is Columbia Pike, and north of Columbia Pike are the Air Force Memorial, the Columbaria, and the in-ground interments. There's also the new entrance along Columbia Pike. South of Columbia Pike are the parking garage and the operations center. The entrance that circled here is what we will be talking about today, and this is the new pedestrian entrance to the cemetery, as well as an entrance and access to the U.S. Air Force Memorial. There's also a vehicular entrance that is intended to be used occasionally for VIPs. This is the previous design. This is actually looking across Columbia Pike to the north, looking northward, and at the new pedestrian entrance. And then the vehicular entrance is over here on the kind of center portion of the slide. And then November 2020 commission action, which you have here, you recommended that the Army explore several changes that would improve the vehicular gate. These included enhancing the fence with posts or columns which delineate the vehicular driveway, integrating the bollards and the fencing, and/or adding shrubs and landscaping to soften views of the fence and bollards. This is the existing Air Force Memorial for just a frame of reference. And after the November meeting, ANC developed an alternative design, which is shown here. It consists of a new fence and gate and reuses the existing paving. You'll notice that the bollards are removed and replaced with a gate and a fence, and these are PU-30 rated, which just means that they can stop a pickup truck. In addition, there are also some bollards that are being proposed in front of the new pedestrian building for safety. There's also a bike rack that you don't see on this image, which is actually up the hill on Columbia Pike, and a low knee wall planter. The new gate and fence will require eight-inch-wide posts, which were actually double the four-inch-wide posts used in the November design. As there were some new elements that were not included in the November design, particularly the things, the elements that were in front of the new pedestrian entrance, staff thought this alternative needed further refinement and organized a meeting with CFA staff and ANC of the Arlington National Cemetery. CFA Commission of Fine Arts staff stated that the November design was approved by its commission because it was a clean and simple form that was visually not intrusive and did not include either substantial posts or have pickets at the top. During this meeting, we agreed that this alternative design included a more substantial gate and fence, which make it appear more industrial or fortified and less inviting. We also understand that this new gate included these eight-inch-wide posts for the gate, which were required for the PU-30 rating. Any reduction in the size of the post would reduce its effectiveness, as well as not allow it to achieve this PU-30 rating. The new bollards for the pedestrian entrance do not seem to fit the overall scheme, which again are over here, and needed to be better integrated into the design. While both NCPC and CFA staff both preferred removing the gate bollards, the ones that were here, this particular alternative design did not appear more welcoming than the November 2020 design. So following that meeting, ANC revised their design again, which is what you see here. This is the final design. While the bollards are retained, there are a few refinements that are shown here. The fence and gate are changed by making a slight change at the top, having alternating heights for the pickets on the fence, as well as maintaining this horizontal datum across the top. The design also includes the landscaping on either side of the fence. There is a low knee wall and three bollards at the pedestrian walkway into the pedestrian entrance to provide safety for pedestrians at this location. The staff understands this revised design helps to minimize the overall appearance of the gate by adding landscaping on either side of the vehicular entry and adding this low knee wall, so all of the elements here. This revised design also helps to protect the visitor entrance from vehicles by incorporating these three new bollards. The low knee wall also helps to provide this safety as well. And then there's the maintaining the overall formality of the overall design for this site. Finally, this is a view of the new pedestrian entrance looking eastward with the three new bollards, as well as the low knee wall at the new entrance. You can see the bike rack, the edge of the bike rack here along the pathway. And with these elements that have been supplied, staff is satisfied with the updated design as it provides a simple unifying entrance for this site. I'll also note that we've received some letters from the Guild of Professional Tour Guides, and these are attached to the staff report that you received. Their main concern was with the closing of this vehicular gate to the public. ANC noted that in order to maintain security at the cemetery, it requires all vehicles to enter the cemetery via the main entrance at Memorial Avenue. The ANC decided this issue over a year ago, and this issue was actually not before the commission. Staff made ANC aware of the concern raised by the Guild of Professional Tour Guides, and they noted that there is an ample parking at Memorial Avenue, and they're enhancing the cemetery shuttles, which currently exist at the cemetery. I'll note also that there is one person to speak from the Guild of Professional Tour Guides, and with that, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission approve the final revised design of the U.S. Air Force Memorial vehicular entrance gate, which includes additional landscaping, three new bollards, and a new wheat knee wall, and refinements to the gate's design. Notes that, in response to the commission comments, the Army Corps, in consultation with NCPC and CFA staff, explored alternative vehicular entrance gate designs, which included removing the vehicular bollards, designing a new gate, and adding more landscaping, and finds the revised design best creates a welcoming entrance by minimizing the overall appearance of the gate, protects the visitor entrance area, and maintains the formality of the memorial and cemetery design. With that, I conclude my presentation, and the representatives from the applicant are here to answer questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Before we begin the commission discussion, do any commissioners have questions for our staff or the applicant? And please remember to turn on your webcam and mic when asking to speak.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Dixon?
I would like to make a motion that this be accepted for discussion and for approval. And I'm particularly interested because, you know, this is on the Freedman's Village lands. I want to be sure I'm involved in the discussion. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other questions for the staff or the applicant? And if not, we do have one person signed up to speak today, Ms. Mary Beth Oaks. And Ms. Oaks, you're speaking today on behalf of the Guild of Professional Tour Guides of Washington, as Mr. Hart noted. You will have five minutes to provide your remarks, and I want to note that your testimony was included as an attachment to the executive director's report. We also received a number of letters from other mission members of your group that were also distributed to the commission. So please, Ms. Oaks.
Well, thank you very much, and good afternoon. I am Mary Beth Oaks, representing the Guild of Professional Tour Guides of Washington, D.C. The Guild has over 500 members, and we're D.C.-licensed tour guides, we're tour operators, and we're friends of the tourism industry. And I know while today's discussion is focused on the revised entrance plan for Arlington National Cemetery Southern Expansion project, the Guild believes it's important to voice our opposition to the exclusion of motor coach parking at the Air Force Memorial's proposed Columbia Pike parking lot, and to share our concern over what we think is at stake if coach parking is prohibitive. In short, a group's ability to pay tribute to the Air Force veterans and active members will be compromised at best. Far worse, groups will stop visiting the Air Force Memorial altogether. The plan requires groups visiting the Air Force Memorial to enter the cemetery from Memorial Avenue, and as a result, individuals on group tours face a strenuous walk from the current visitor center to the memorial, and basically that will be a two-mile round trip trek. For older guests, young children, individuals with mobility issues, this walk could be very difficult, if not impossible. Now, some say that groups can take the tram. However, the reality is, this is not an option for most groups. Trams are expensive, and when you're traveling on a tight budget, the added cost is prohibitive. And then there's the logistical challenge of getting 40 or 50 people onto one tram. Guides moving in a large group together know that the tram is not practical, particularly during peak tourist season. Dozens of bus groups from different tours visit the cemetery at the same time. There are days when it's so crowded the coaches can't find parking at the onsite lot, and they drop groups off, and so the groups then go in. Now it's suggested that groups take the tram to the memorial. So imagine hundreds more people, these multiple groups, waiting for a ride. The often long lines at the visitor center tram station will likely swell to unbearable proportions. And catching the tram for the return trip, guides know from experience that when you're moving a group around the cemetery, getting them on the return tram is even more of a nightmare to navigate. So the claim that the tram is a viable option for large groups is, we believe, an oversimplified narrative. Often, individuals take group tours because it's economical, and for some, it's the only way they can afford to travel, and it may be their only occasion to visit our national military memorials. So the question is, should individuals face unequal treatment, or have to take extra steps, or even forego seeing the memorial simply because they journey by coach? Since the Air Force Memorial's dedication, entry has been visitor-friendly. Now, what was a 15-minute visit will take at least 30 minutes to reach the memorial and another 30 minutes to return to the coach. Tour groups operate on very strict schedules, and the additional time means that many guests are simply going to skip visiting this memorial. Guides frequently take Air Force retirees or family members of Air Force personnel to the memorial via motor coach. For example, a favorite tour of mine were Air Force veterans who served together in the 1960s. They and their spouses gathered for a reunion, and their joy of being together was evident by jokes and smiles and laughter, and the only request that they had for me was, begin the tour at their Air Force memorial. Now, I can't say they'd pay the fee for the tram, but I do know a two-mile hike would never have worked for them, the amount of time too long, the distance too far. In this case, because it was an evening tour, the cemetery would actually be closed, and they would be locked out of their memorial. So it's an important reminder that many tour groups and most business and convention groups schedule monument tours for the evening. If the site is closed, that means they will not be visiting the memorial. This constraint is a stark contrast to other military memorials in the Washington area, which are open to the public 24/7. A stop at the memorial enables tour guides to share the many stories and for groups to learn more about this important branch of military service. Restricted access means fewer people will hear about the sacrifice and the service of men and women who serve, a particularly regrettable loss of information for young people. While the Guild supports the expansion of Arlington National Cemetery, we object to the restricted access to the Air Force memorial, and if the memorial's absorption into the cemetery grounds happens, motor coach parking must be an option at the Columbia Pike entrance, allowing group travelers the very same opportunity as other visitors to enter the cemetery nearest the memorial. I thank you for your consideration of time and happy to answer any questions that you might have. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Oaks. I would like to ask the commission members if there are any questions specifically for Ms. Oaks, and if we have questions, please let me know. But I also want to ask if we could have the applicant respond to Ms. Oaks' testimony, so if you would please be ready to do that. But in the meantime, commissioners, I see Commissioner May, you turned your camera on, so I take it you have a question, so please proceed.
Yes, I do. So Ms. Oaks, it seems that parking for motor coaches is not really going to be feasible. Is it feasible for the motor coaches to drop people off at that entrance to see it and then pick them up? Because I know that is a common practice in Washington, because there's never enough parking in close proximity to the many sites on the mall and in the surrounding area.
Well, I do believe drop off and pickup could be possible. I do, not being a motor coach driver, I would caution that the safety of this coach driver's pulling in and out, finding a place to drive around while they're waiting for the group. So I think it's possible, but I would also defer to the coast industry as to, you know, any safety concerns that they might have.
Right. I can certainly... I have been involved in discussions of motor coaches and how they are, how they could be managed in Washington overall for probably 20, at least 20 years, in various positions. And this has always been an issue because there's, you know, it's the best way to move groups of people, right? And so, you know, even if we put a tram system around the mall or something like that, it wouldn't work for the groups that come in, because they want to be together, and tour guides, like yourself, you know, need to be with them on the bus and need to be with those groups. So it's, I mean, I understand the complications of that, but I also know that it's not physically possible to have buses, bus parking at all of these locations where I would ideally stop and park and wait until, you know, the tour of a particular site is done. So I imagine the circumstance of dropping off and then coming back, while not ideal, is something that, you know, it's managed safely in other places. Maybe it could be done here. But I guess, I don't know what the roadway situation is and whether the roadway allows for that kind of activity or not. We'll certainly hope that the applicant's representatives will be able to talk to that a little bit. Second question I had is, you know, we were reminded today that the decision to create this enclosure, the Air Force memorial, was made more than a year ago, and, you know, we've been talking about this project for well more than a year. And I'm wondering why, you know, at the 11th hour, I mean, we wouldn't even be having this meeting if not for the fact that we were unhappy about this one small detail of the overall project. Why is it that you are coming to us right at this moment?
Yeah, it's a very good question. Well, we were tracking it for a while, and yet, last year's, you know, the tourism industry had a big adjustment on their hand with the COVID issue, and so we had a refocus of our issues on just economic survival and re-learning new skills so that we could provide tours or information to guests through new venues. And so it took a while for us to kind of move beyond that. And then the third part of this is that, when we were refocusing in November, we misunderstood what we were reading. We thought that, in fact, there would be parking at the Columbia site entrance. And so originally, our intent was just to say, you know, when you're looking at the entrance, you know, take into consideration public safety of moving a large group around and across Columbia Pike. So it wasn't until after a conversation with the staff, and I thank them very much for all their help, that we realized that, in fact, coaches would not be allowed to park there. So there were a combination of factors.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. I'm glad you were not completely in the dark about it, because sometimes, you know, we hear that in, well, not so much in this commission, but in other roles, we hear, well, we never heard anything about it, and that would be a problem for the kind of processes that federal agencies have to go through to make sure that the public is notified of projects that will affect the environment and will affect how people can visit important places like this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Do any other commissioners have questions for Ms. Oaks?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Dixon?
I, first of all, want to indicate that we always get information from the witnesses that help us. I do think that I support Peter's concern and his view, because like him, I've been in... around it for a while and know about this, our need to drop off buses and the coach service. So I just hope that there's a way that we can maybe make sure that the drop-off capacity for coaches is at least helped and facilitated. I'm not sure what that includes, but I hope we can do that. I also would like to make it clear that, as an honorably discharged Airman II, and a member of the Air Force Academy Class of Sixty-Seven, and all I have been through with the Air Force memorial from its first place to now where it is now, I am very concerned that we have access to it, and I support the presentation of the witness about that. But I think that the drop-off ability is one that, as Peter suggested, has worked in other cases, and hopefully be accommodated here. But I still clearly would like to go forth and move with some, maybe caveat if we can. Maybe the staff can help us see how we can ask them to address this drop-off capacity for coaches.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Any other questions for Ms. Oaks? So, hearing none. Ms. Oaks, thank you so much. I really appreciate your candor and very sensitive to the impact on the tourism industry, and I appreciate you reminding us of that. It's a tricky situation, to say the least. And at this stage, I would love to hear from the applicant to speak to the concerns that Ms. Oaks has raised and that Commissioner Dixon and Commissioner May have suggested perhaps a way to think through some of those impacts.
And, yes, Vice Chair White, I think it's Colonel Austin is, will be representing ANC and/or identify the personnel that could respond.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel Austin.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Colonel, or Mr. Hart. As you said, I am Colonel Tom Austin. I am the Director of Engineering and currently the Chief of Staff for Arlington National Cemetery. First, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I very much appreciate the commission's time and the interest from the public, especially the Tour Guild. Also, thank you, Mr. Hart, for his excellent presentation and his partnership throughout this design. The journey to get to this point involved great collaboration and engagement by many, many stakeholders. I am pleased that many members of that collaboration are on this call, including multiple members of the Air Force District of Washington, who are in charge of the Air Force memorial. To address this specific concern, first, I'd like to say the safety and security of our visitors and staff are always the most important consideration for this project. Following just behind that is our concern for visitor experience. We believe the integration of the Air Force memorial and Arlington National Cemetery will enhance access to the memorial, not restricted. We plan on making the Air Force memorial an integral part of the experience for our three-point-four-million-plus annual visitors. And even if only some of our visitors decide to add the Air Force memorial to their journey, we believe this will still be a significant net increase to the overall visitors to the Air Force memorial. Unfortunately, we were not able to accommodate a specific bus pullover by the proposed southern entrance to ANC. That's the access point directly adjacent to the Air Force memorial. The tight geography of that site and the safety concerns expressed by Arlington County precluded making that design addition. The profile of the Columbia Pike roadway was the subject of a long design process with Arlington County, the Virginia Department of Transportation, the Air Force, federal highways, and the public. That collaboration led to the design including multiple vehicle travel lanes, a bike path, and sidewalks, which left no room for a dedicated bus pullover. There are, however, existing and some proposed bus stops in that area that would act as alternates, including the one at the 9/11 memorial near the Pentagon South parking lot. In the future, the Air Force memorial would need to follow the same operating hours as ANC. To do otherwise would involve significant physical and operational changes to isolate the Air Force memorial, and that would break up the flow of visitors back and forth, both to the memorial and ANC. And we believe any change of this nature would degrade both the experience and the aesthetics of both sites. We understand that there are some trade-offs associated with proposed integration, but truly believe that this design represents a significant net improvement for both the Air Force memorial and the Arlington National Cemetery. I hope this adequately addresses the issue, but I'm happy answering these other specific questions.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for Colonel Austin on this matter?
I'd just like to get a clear, Madam Chair, that this drop-off, of the use of a drop-off capacity, was fully explored and that it's a really, not a likely solution or not possible. I think you made that clear, Colonel, as in '06 to '06. I want to find out whether or not this was fully explored.
It did come up in multiple design considerations, and there are bus travel lanes that are identified on the profile of the road, but the road profile that we looked at, which is Columbia Pike, and if, we don't have the design handy, but if you're looking at a two-dimensional top-down shot, you can see how tight that is right in front of the Air Force memorial, because of the parking garage that we were putting in the south area, which is the entrance for personal vehicles, not tour buses unfortunately, but personal vehicles, as well as the crosswalk, the sidewalks, the bike travel lanes, things of that nature. So it was explored. We did discuss it at some length, especially with Arlington County. But there were safety concerns, and there were also just the road profile itself, standoff, et cetera. So this design, that design of the road profile took well over a year of collaboration, and probably longer than that, at least in the conceptual stage. So it was addressed, we did think about it. And I don't want to speak for other people, but there are other areas that are being proposed in that same vicinity that may be happening concurrently. But right now, the closest drop-offs, dedicated drop-offs, that after we flatten Columbia Pike, take off the triangle, or top of the triangle, if you will, there, would be the south parking for Pentagon Memorial. That would be the closest one, that we have a dedicated spot. Now, there may be some flexibility with Arlington County down in the future, where they may allow bus drop-offs, but not a pull-over lane. I hope that answered the question.
So, in other words, there is a possibility of drop-off by buses, but not obviously staging areas within the state. Is that clear?
I will say that that area is going to be turned over to Arlington County, and that was not their preference because of safety concerns. I believe Ms. Oaks also expressed that, is that having those just drop-offs right in front of it is a safety issue. So that is not Arlington County's preference, but I can't give an answer on behalf of them, because they will be the ones that will be owners of that particular piece of the roadway at that time.
So if it's not right in front, could it be close enough, maybe closer than the other memorials you spoke of?
There is room for, there is opportunities in the future. In fact, there's some areas out by Freedman's Gate that we're looking at, kind of on the other side to the west. And then the other one would be the 9/11 memorial to the east. The visitor, again, I want, correction, I don't want to speak for any other proposed areas out there that I can't control. So, but we have looked for opportunities, and there probably are opportunities in the future. And I guess I can open this up to our design consultant, Greg Schreider, and if he has any other input on the specific points as far as past collaborations. So Greg, if you want to jump in on that one, just that specific piece, go ahead.
And Colonel Austin, this is-
And I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't know if anybody needed a-
Put it up on the screen, so you could see, we're on the same page. Because I think it would be helpful for the commission to see these areas that you're describing, but it sounds to me that what you're saying is that you'll continue to have conversation to explore this issue.
Like slide three, maybe, or four?
Probably better do, yeah, like a top-down-
There's a plan of the entire, I did the entire site plan for this one. This at least shows the particular areas. I can't point to particular areas, but this is Columbia Pike that you see here, of course. The area for, yeah, that's along here. The 9/11 Visitor Education Center, which is kind of ghosted out in the bottom, to the right portion, this is 9/11 VEC site. That's, you know, one of the sites I think you were talking about, Colonel Austin. And then there's a small road to the west or to the left, almost the far-left side of the image that shows a road that's the connection into Joint Base Meyer-Henderson Hall, where that's the access road to get over to there. So I think that you may have been talking about that, Colonel Austin.
Yes. Well, I was not specifically speaking about the 9/11 Visitor Education Center, because that is still a proposed site, and I can't speak for the viability of that and the timeline for that. I do know that they have some considerations along those lines, but that would not be something I would, if you will, hang my hat on. If you did look off to kind of the far-left there, where South Nash comes out by there, but Freedman's Gate, that would be a proposed area that we'd look at. And then off to the east, kind of far to the east unfortunately, is where they have the current 9/11 memorial, which is the one I'm specifically addressing there, as an area that could have a dedicated, or either does or will have a dedicated bus pullover spot.
Thank you. I didn't know if Mr. Schreider wanted to add anything else.
Now, Colonel Austin covered it. I think that there has been a long history and an extensive outreach and public engagement around this with multiple agencies in the public. So I think he covered that well, but we can certainly, if there are specific questions, we can address them. Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have specific questions for the applicants before we move to discussion?
I do.
Mr. May.
Yeah. So I just was seeking clarity on the drop-off at the 9/11 memorial. I mean, the 9/11 Visitor Education Center, I get is theoretical, but the memorial is not actually pictured on here, is it? Or is it maybe off to the right in the middle there? Yeah.
Yeah, right, as far right as you can go. Yeah, just kind of those small dots or things that are part of the memorial.
Yeah, and then the bus drop-off for that area is where? Does anybody know?
You can barely see just a piece of it off to the right. It's just off, it's basically just off-screen there. So it's still a walk. It's not right on top of it, and I'm not going to try to sugarcoat it and say it will be right there that they could do it, but if we're asking for dedicated areas, that would be the spot. Now, there is opportunities potentially in the future working with Arlington County where they may be able to have something, but as far as the physical infrastructure of the road, which is what we've had, gone through the design collaboration is, there is no dedicated bus pullover, nor is there one planned at this point.
Right. And the, as I recall, there's a good bit of grade difference between the entrance to the Air Force memorial and, you know, sloping down, I guess, to where the 9/11 Visitor Education Center site is. Is that right? Do I remember that correctly?
Correct. If you're going from, it basically slopes downwards from left to right as you're looking at it, from west to east. So the 9/11 more, I'm sorry, the Air Force memorial is a higher grade than where the grade here with the 9/11 is, correct?
Does anybody have any sense of how much that is? I mean, I think I can see some-
Yeah. It's considerable. It's, I think, seventy, eighty feet, at least.
Seventy or eighty?
Probably more like a hundred. I'm sorry?
Seventy or eighty feet of vertical difference between-
Yeah, maybe even more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, okay, so if there's going to be any kind of accommodation, it seems like it has to be on the top of the hill and not, not at the bottom, because it's seventy or eighty feet is, that's hard even for people who are fit. So, well, maybe not that hard, still. Wouldn't be that easy for me.
But for people with mobility issues, I think your points are a good one.
Yeah.
With the answer to the question, our primary method, our primary way we'd like visitors, especially large tour buses stature, is through memorial, through the existing parking areas. There's ample surface parking. We have a staff that is used to welcoming visitors in there. You know, the number of visitors we get to come into our buses is substantial through there, and so they're well-versed at taking care of crowds that way. So really, what we're talking about here is just the tour buses in that particular spot, not necessarily other methods or means that people visit the memorial.
Right, understood. But, you know, what we're hearing from is, from the Tour Guide Association, who have concerns, because they travel in tour buses like that. And so how do they, I mean, it's not practical to think that they're going to go to the Arlington National Cemetery Visitor Center parking lot area to park buses and then troop up here on foot, or even to take trams, because it's a difficult thing to try to keep groups together when you're traveling in that kind of a mode. So it does leave out a potentially significant audience for the memorial, which is unfortunate.
And if that's your primary destination-
Yeah.
-to see the memorial.
Right. And I'm sure those groups have, you know, happen that there are ones who are coming specifically for that, and not necessarily doing the entirety of Arlington National Cemetery, particularly if it's a two- or three-hour tour into itself. So, okay, well, I don't know, I mean, I don't think there's anything we can be doing at this moment that's going to change that, unfortunately, except to encourage the ANC and work with the county to try to develop an accommodation, because if it doesn't happen in a planned way, it will likely happen in an organic way, which means that, you know, there could be dangerous situations with buses dropping off at that location. So, all right, well, that's, for my questions, thank you.
Thank you. So any other questions for commissioners before we open it up for discussion?
I want to just pick up here. I'm still looking at the column burial. That side, is there anything that could at least be created to do, create a drop-off? I mean, it'd be good for the column burial and also good for the Air Force memorial. It's kind of ironic, too, that if we had the Air Force memorial where it started, we wouldn't be dealing with this issue, though I think what we have now is a gem of a memorial compared to what was looked at many years ago. But I'm wondering about the column burial, is that a, there seems to be some space there. Does that, would that make any sense? I don't know.
Colonel Austin, do you have someone you would want to have respond to that question?
I can let Greg Schreider and talk to the specifics of that area. That is not, the road profile in Columbia Pike was something that we went through with long collaboration with Arlington County. Now, as far as the geography, where South Nash and Columbia Pike come together, that might be something that Greg can speak to.
Yeah.
So Greg, if you have anything, please go ahead.
We do. And again, Arlington National Cemetery worked closely with the county, and that was a part of the initial proposal, but the county, as mentioned by Colonel Austin, does not, for safety reasons, want a bus pull-off off of Columbia Pike. So, we did look at it, sir. We proposed it, but with the county as the owner and operator, and with the extensive public bus network that is along those same roadways, they had significant concerns and requested that we not provide the pull-off over.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'd like to open it up now to the commission for discussion, and I'll start with Commissioner May, and then go in a round-robin format, using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on during the discussion. And Commissioner May, I just wanted to see if you had anything additional you would like to add to the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's always uncomfortable when we get this far along in a project and find out that there is a flaw like this in the design become apparent, because we're not really in a position to try to address it. I mean, I agree, this is not really on the table at this moment. But it really is unfortunate, and I think that the, I'm not sure how it came to pass that the issue of tour bus access to the site is something that didn't get addressed in a manner that was more robust in earlier stages, but it is what it is at this point, and I don't see that we're going to be able to change anything with it. And I will say frankly, I don't know that it necessarily has to change. I don't know enough about it to say that a mistake really has been made. Maybe Arlington County and ANC have made all the right decisions and that this is going to be fine. I don't know that. We've only heard, you know, this, these bits of testimony very close to the end of the process. So as for what is before us, which is the design of the entrance to the Air Force memorial, I do believe that what is presented is slightly improved over what we had before. It is still a pretty foreboding fence, and it's never a good look to have bollards behind fences. But I don't think that the alternative with the beefier posts was the right solution either. I, you know, I want to believe that there might have been something better than that, but, you know, what we've seen today is marginally better, and I guess I'm okay with supporting it. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
Well, I would probably join Mr. May in his lukewarm acceptance. Well, I would probably join Mr. May in his lukewarm acceptance of the proposal. I'm not sure where else we can go at this point that would satisfy, you know, really satisfy some of the concerns that we've heard. So, the, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
I think it's, it's complicated, and I have to feel that I am in touch with my classmates from the academy and military people who are very interested in coming to this memorial. So I'm, I'm real torn by them not having the access with the buses. I didn't, I can't see why it would be such a problem. I do know a lot, of course, knowing them, they, they're challenged physically in terms, many of them, to get to this. And I hope that there's something can be worked out with the local jurisdiction and with the government to make accommodations at some point to try to handle this. It's unfortunate, as Peter said, and I join him and what he's concerned. But I think we need to probably move forward, and maybe it will work out. We got to find a way to work it out. And I'm sure that my class, they will probably have a lot of people who weigh in on this and have their own views of what should have been done and could be done. But it may be late in this dance right now. So it's, it's troublesome.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
I'll associate myself with the comments so far, but I don't have any other questions or comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
I think it's also really important to restate that it's not just compliance with the ADA, it's going above and beyond and making sure that there's access for all of those who want to go there. And just thinking about the user experience, knowing the types of people who are going to want to visit this memorial, and, and making sure it's accessible for them specifically. So I associate myself with the comments that have been made, and just want to reinforce that there, there could be better solutions offered if there, maybe there's more engagement with the public to have ideas about how to make those improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood.
I guess I will agree with what has been said, especially Commissioner May. You know, I hear the challenges or an importance of the tour bus, but at this point, it's not really before us, and so I don't know how we can consider it, given how far we've, you know, everybody has worked towards this point. I will also say, I, the, the look of fence and bollards is foreboding. I don't know if I agree with the assessment that, in some ways, I think the industrial, less bollardly look looks better at the end. I guess that might just be a question of aesthetics. But, you know, larger posts, but fewer, but no bollards, I thought, looked kind of cleaner and maybe a little bit less foreboding. But in the end, like I said, maybe it's just an aesthetic judgment. I'm happy to support this moving forward.
Thank you. Well, hearing those comments, I have a question for the commission, and thinking about an earlier suggestion of making a statement encouraging the applicant to continue working with the county to address these issues of circulation. I mean, we can just offer our encouragement. As you said, the issue is not before us. However, it has been brought to our attention with thoughtful public testimony and other letters. And I'm curious what the, what the feel is and how we might want to word that. I think Commissioner Dixon, you had made that point earlier, but I wanted to at least raise that as a, as a point of discussion. We can ask the secretary to help us with language, but I do agree with Commissioner Ginsburg's point about accessibility, and I think it's an important thing for us as a commission to make a statement about.
This is, this is a good point. I think what we can do, given the commission's interest, is if you give me a minute or so, we could, you could make a motion and second that, and in the second, that would encourage the cemetery to continue to monitor and, you know, monitor what's happening with tour bus operations and continue conversations to pursue, you know, safe, accessible, and effective transportation options for the visitors that want to come to this memorial. So I don't know if I just said it, managed to say it there.
You said it very well. And I was wondering, procedurally, do we need a motion on the table?
Actually, there isn't.
And building plans, and then we can have discussion, and then, or do we need to approve that and ask for an amendment? So I'm not sure how you want to handle that procedure.
Yeah, I think, I think there is a motion on the table. I made it early on, and I would modify that motion, I would modify that motion to include language consistent with Madam Secretary's recommendation that, that we move forward with that motion.
What would, what would procedurally, I think, be the most effective is if you can vote first on the amendment, and then we'll take up the motion that?
My motion, my motion is, is outstanding, and I would just modify my motion to include language that you have expressed. So that becomes the whole, whole, whole thing. That's it, that is the action.
Okay. Then we would simply need, if people were comfortable with the language, I'd have to go back and listen to the recording and make sure I have it, have it correct, but if that works, what we would need now is a second.
So is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it, even though I'm not completely sure what it is.
Oh, I mean, it's clear, it's clear that the motion is to go forward, we adopt what was presented by the staff, but we would include language that the secretary, Madam Secretary has, has expressed to us. Those words aren't in concrete yet, but we, I think we understand it is to try to accommodate. It sounds like the county is a big player in this, try to accommodate our concerns. And that's what the secretary said, I think.
I would also say, I think we need to be a little, a little, maybe go beyond some of the language that I've heard and be a little more directive. That would be my suggestion.
So I think what we're asking for is for the applicant to continue to work with the county to address issues of circulation for the visitors to the memorial who are arriving by tour bus, and acknowledging those with mobility issues. But I will leave it to our secretary to come up with appropriate language. And Madam Secretary, do you want us to give you a moment now to do that?
Um. Pick up and drop off. I think I have it.
Well, I appreciate being able to do this during the meeting. I think it's a significant enough issue that we should make a statement. So I appreciate everyone's patience as we work this through. And acknowledge that a lot of good work has gone into this, and again, the candor of what this past year has been like for tour operators and the tourism industry, and trying to keep up with impacts on their industry from every direction. So appreciate the good faith efforts all around.
How about, if I may propose this, to amend the EDR, to encourage Arlington National Cemetery to continue to monitor tour bus operations, and to work with Arlington County and others to consider appropriate future solutions for tour bus pickup and drop off, as well as addressing accessibility, the accessibility needs of visitors.
Can we change "consider" to "explore"?
Uh, "explore"? The accessibility needs.
Sorry, that's Wendy.
Yeah, to explore the accessibility needs of others?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other suggestions? I think Commissioner Argo, I thought you were saying something, but you're on mute. Did you have suggestions for making that a stronger statement?
They, no. They were addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. So would you like to read that one more time, Madam Secretary, and then we can go back to voting on the motion?
Okay. To encourage Arlington National Cemetery to continue to monitor tour bus operations, and to work with Arlington County and other stakeholders to consider future solutions for tour bus pickup and drop off, and to explore accessibility, I think, the accessibility needs of others, of visitors to the site.
I, I think I meant the, sorry.
Go ahead.
I used the, the wrong "consider" was changed. It was the first "consider."
Ah, to explore, okay. Okay, then so.
I apologize, I didn't realize there were two "considers."
Okay. So then, what they're doing at the end is they are exploring the accessibility needs of visitors. Or to?
I think it was the first "consider," when you were talking about considering solutions, "explore" solutions is what the Commissioner Ginsburg was asking for.
Correct. So to encourage Arlington National Cemetery to continue to monitor tour bus operations and to work with Arlington County and other stakeholders to explore future solutions for tour bus pickup and drop off. And then the last bit, I could just say, including the accessibility needs of visitors.
Perfect.
Okay.
That works. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a team effort.
Is there? Do we need a motion again? Or I think we have a motion and a second, and so do we call the vote on the stated language that you just read?
That's correct.
So, so Ms. Costa, would you please call the roll, roll call vote?
You both. So Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Thank you. It was all in favor.
Thank you. So the motion carries. Thank you, Colonel Austin and your team, for continuing to work through this and for being here today, and, and to our Ms. Oaks for her testimony. So with that, we will move next to two information presentations on projects that the commission will be reviewing in the near future. Agenda Item 7A is an information presentation on the Bureau of Engraving and Printing Currency Production Facility. Mr. Hart, you are presenting again.
Yes. Second time's the charm. Good afternoon, members of the commission. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, in conjunction with the Bureau of Engraving and Printing, or BEP, are coming before you to introduce you to the BEP Currency Production Facility. This information presentation will introduce you to this new facility, its purpose and the goals of the project. This, the project itself is to modernize the currency production operations within a new facility on an existing property known as the Belfill Agricultural Research Center, or BARK. Here's the format for the presentation today, which will be first, sorry, which would be given by both NCPC staff, myself, BEP, and the consultant team. Staff, of course, is giving the, this brief intro. BEP will provide, a representative from BEP will provide some background, and the consultant team will be presenting the existing site and concept proposal. Following this, staff will provide our comments that we submitted for the draft environmental impact statement, which was in December, and will finally end with the submission review timeline. I did want to orient you a little for the site, so that you're aware of where we're talking about. This is a new facility being proposed on a 100-acre existing site within the Belfill Agricultural Research Center, or, as I said, BARK. As you can see here, it's located just outside of the Beltway. The Beltway's here, and it is just to the west of 295 or BW Parkway, and to the east of I-95. And it's located in Prince George's County, Maryland. There are nearby federal facilities that are here. You will also hear our information presentation about the FDA Merkirk, which is a site that is just to the northeast. There's also the J.J. Rowley Federal Training Center, which is actually to the, also to the east. NASA is located in fairly close proximity to this as well. It is southeast, a few miles away. I also note that the FDA White Oak Campus, as well as the Adelphi Laboratories, which is run by the U.S. Army, are due west of the site. And then finally, the Belfill Agricultural Research, Research Center, the campus, is a, is a fairly large campus, as you can see here, that covers over a number of miles. And so with that brief summary and just kind of introduction, I would now like to introduce Mr. Chuck Davis, who works in the, with BEP in the facility property management office, and he'll be providing you with a, with a background and introducing the, the other staff of the consulting team. Mr. Davis.
All right. Thank you, Carlton. Can you, next slide, please? Good afternoon, commissioners and NCPC staff. On behalf of the entire leadership team at BEP, we're pleased to provide you with an introduction to a project with both domestic and international economic implications. The Bureau produces the world's most recognizable and trusted banknote. In order to remain ahead of emerging threats to our banknote, the Bureau is implementing a congressionally authorized program to modernize our facilities and production capabilities. Next slide, please. As you can see, the Bureau has been operating out of its current DC facility for, for over 100 years. Over the past 20 years, the BEP has been evaluating its options with respect to current facilities and how they can support increasingly, can support increasingly more complex production processes. Unfortunately, it has been determined and validated that the existing facilities can no longer support the Bureau's mission. Therefore, the Bureau is moving forward with a hybrid facility solution, one that moves production to a more secure and efficient facility while maintaining an administrative headquarters function of approximately 300 to 400 personnel in our, in a future renovated main building. Next slide. Multiple facility studies have demonstrated over the past decade the following issues associated with the current DC facility. First, the building inefficiencies. We have the, we have incorrect type of space emerged for emergency print equipment and security features technology, including additional production processes that are coming down the pike to ensure that our currency remains secure. We are currently in a 107-year-old facility designed for an antiquated production process, which you can see down in the bottom left-hand corner of the 1918 way we used to produce currency. It was very manual orientated, and now, as you can see in the 2020, it is a very highly automated, large, complex presses. We currently have equipment on multiple floors and two separate buildings. So there is a main building, and there is an annex building, which was built several years after the 1914 main building. Because of our existing limitations, we're required to lease a material storage warehouse for bulk material, because we cannot fit it in the existing facilities. And that, that facility is in Landover, Maryland. That facility would be returned to GSA since it's leased property and consolidated into a new facility. And then finally, we have an inefficient structural system. Both of these buildings have very rigid floor-to-ceiling heights, and we are constantly getting larger and larger presses that are both heavier and taller, that larger and larger presses that are both heavier and taller that are being limited by the facility. Also, another deficiency noted was a health and safety issue of our workers. Over 70% of our worker injuries are a result of materials handling. And that's because in our DC facility, a piece of currency paper moves approximately twice as long, twice the distance as it does in our more efficient Fort Worth, Texas facility, which is a single-floor, high bay, open manufacturing area. And finally, the biggest reason for the need for a new facility, which was pointed out by both the Government Accountability Office and the previous Treasury Secretary, was our high risk of being in an urban location. We are a symbol of the economic power of this country, making us a ripe target. We have both multiple vehicle and personnel entries, as opposed to a single entry like our Fort Worth facility, which was built in the 1990s. We have a limited setback distance from potential vehicle explosions. We are immediately, we have basically a six-foot-wide sidewalk right off of the 14th Street corridor leading from Virginia into DC. And there's no way to improve that. And then finally, the buildings are historic. And so obviously, implementing hardening and progressive collapse improvements would be difficult. Next slide, please. In 2018, on behalf of Congress, the Government Accountability Office reviewed the Bureau's planned facility programs and concurred with Treasury's recommendations that a new production facility is both less expensive and would better address BEP's need for secure, efficient, and a flexible currency production facility that cannot be renovated in the existing facilities. So we've chosen a hybrid solution, as I mentioned, a new production facility outside of the capital area, but also maintaining an administrative function in the main building. And you can see the difference in price for the cost estimates of 1.4 billion versus 2.0 billion. The picture to the right shows a kind of a layout of our Western Currency Facility in Fort Worth, Texas. Again, it's a single-floor, highly secure, we have lots of standoff distance in order to secure our product. And we're not saying we're going to model that layout per se, but that's what we're looking for is a single-floor manufacturing for efficiency. Next slide. As part of the Bureau's implementation of the hybrid facility program, we began a study to locate potential locations within the national capital region for a new facility. Our site selection criteria consisted of federally owned property. We are cognizant of increasing the federal footprint. And so our look has been confined to existing federally owned properties. The 100 acres in size is a, takes into account multiple issues. This is a fairly large facility at approximately a million-square foot footprint, not including our standoff distances and also parking and potential for expansion in the future. So that is how we arrived at the 100 acres. Our Fort Worth facility is also on 100 acres. Location, we wanted to stay within the national capital region because we have a very highly skilled workforce that cannot be replicated outside of the district area or the national capital region. Our employees have a long tenure and are very highly skilled craftsmen that, you know, the private industry does, you know, the print industry has decreased significantly and therefore the labor pool is very small. We also needed access to interstate highway system because most of our currency is transported via currency carrier, secure carriers, both to the Federal Reserve Banks and then also to major airports for commercial carrier distribution. Finally, we wanted to ensure that we don't create significant environmental issues and we were looking for a site that did not have, you know, significant issues as well. So of the sites that we looked at, there's a list there. Just to note, you know, the only site that met the above selection criteria within the district was the RFK Stadium, which obviously has some issues and the district has redevelopment plans for that area. The other sites were scattered, as you can see on the map, throughout Virginia and Maryland. Next slide, please. Ultimately, after an exhaustive and comprehensive analysis of the available federal properties, the Bureau, in partnership with USDA, recommended moving forward with additional analysis of the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, or as Carlton mentioned, BARK. It was determined the site exceeded our baseline search criteria and provided the following additional features. First of all, the facility is a previously developed site. It is not a greenfield site. It has existing laboratory research, agricultural research laboratories on the site and as well as typical poultry and animal housing buildings. The site also has existing utilities, roadway infrastructure, and is fairly level and clear. It's not dense forest. Many of the sites that we looked at were similar to, if you look east of the perimeter or of the building site, very dense forest. And that was very important to us, that we do not, you know, go in and clear cut a forest, you know, 100 acres of forest. And the site is also close to major transportation networks, as mentioned before, I-95, the Parkway and the Beltway, which are our critical transportation nodes for our carriers. And then also, most importantly, USDA is very supportive of our relocation to this facility. We are going to partner with them on utility usage, road upkeep, and other government functions at the site. And ultimately, Congress agreed with USDA and provided the congressional authority for this exact site in the 2018 Agricultural Improvement Act, as you can read at the bottom there. Next slide. As part of our analysis of the BARK site, we've undertook a transportation impact study in consultation with an approval of multiple stakeholders, including MNCPCC. The study included talking with stakeholders and talking with our employees on how they would commute to this site. It should be noted that approximately 65% of our employees live in Maryland, and of that percentage, approximately 45% live in Prince George's County. So they are coming from, most of our employees are going to be local employees. The impacted locations, the study identified locations within the transportation network that are going to require potential mitigation. And it's our, the project's team's commitment to continue to assess those and develop mitigation strategies with local agencies in order to pursue those mitigations. Next slide. Finally, the following list detailed here is a high-level summary of the public outreach activities conducted by the project team over the past three years. The team is committed to keeping local, state, and federal stakeholders up to date with the latest project information as it becomes available. And of course, obviously, ongoing consultation with yourselves, the Commission. So I would like to now introduce our project's lead program manager from the Capital Currency Team, which is our design consultant, Joe Ruko. Joe?
Thanks, Chuck. Good afternoon, Vice Chairman White and Commissioners. As you're beginning to gather, this is a seminal project for our federal government. And just to let you know, the consulting team is the Capital Currency Team, made up of Skidmore Owens &amp; Merrill. I'm an architect with SOM, and our partners are Ghaffari Associates for Industrial Engineering and Hewitt Solers for MEP Engineering. And you'll hear from me a bit later, but introducing our landscape designer, Faye Harwell, who was actually involved in authoring the original historic report for the BARK site several years back. Faye?
Thank you very much, Joe. Good afternoon, everybody. I'll go off video to favor the slides for now. Let's take a closer look following this overview of the site and its setting. We know we have the transportation network that was just mentioned. A little closer looking at it, we've got from the Green Belt Metro Rail Transit Hub to Interstate 495, the Capital Beltway, Interstate 95. And then US Route 1 at the north and the BW Parkway on the east. Let's go to the next. This is about a three-mile radius, and you see the site in the center. And here it is, taking a little closer look at the neighborhood. Powder Mill Road to the south, Edmundston Road to the west, Odell Road to the north. And then on the east, one of those large forests that Chuck was mentioning before, and then the site in the center. And let's look at it a little bit more closely again. Residential development is primarily to the west and the north. Along Odell Road, it's a group of small, single-family homes. To the far west, it's commercial and industrial. And then the rest of the site is either institutional for the BARK operation, as it has been since the 1930s, or agricultural lands, which still are in use today and will continue to be. Let's go to the next. The topography of the site is really important, and it'll help us situate and screen the new facility. As was mentioned, it's a large facility, and the gently rolling terrain includes a series of ridges at the south along Powder Mill Road. And to the west, the grades will help us to buffer the views of the project from the western roads. The topo ranges from about a high point between elevation of 170 to 180 on the far east, where the forest slopes are. And you see the top of the ridge in the red dotted line. And then on the west side, you see a series of smaller ridges that are the ones that I mentioned before. And then the plateau, which is generally flatter in the area going from about elevation 150 down to about elevation 140. And those sound like large dimensions or large drops in grade, but this is a very large site at 100 acres. And then the bottom right, the green area, is a little bowl that is a very important part of the site aesthetically and ecologically, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. And you see also on the south part of the site, one additional ridge, which helps us to screen and buffer the site from Powder Mill Road. Let's go to the next. We have a number of resources that we are working very hard to protect. On the lower right, you see the sort of animal-looking shape. It's a large wetlands, which is a jurisdictional wetland, and its buffer, which are going to be a preservation set aside. Three other wetlands throughout the site, which are non-regulated. And two of those will be incorporated into the site plan, be filled for the facility. And the last one on the top right is going to be preserved as part of the north edge of the site, which is also a forest preserve. And it's a reforestation area right now. It's going to continue to be so. And then on the right side, just off the property line, you can see the forested, the beginning of the forested hillside. And then the little lighter green eggs are the specimen trees, which we've been looking at in the critical root zones. And we know we can preserve many of them in the wetlands area. And we will be trying to preserve some of them on that east side as well. So you have that sense of the three different kinds of landscapes, and we'll get into that in a moment. There's one other thing I'd like to point out. On the northeast corner of the site is an archaeological area. And there have been several throughout the site that have been investigated as part of the Section 106 process. If we can come back, here we go. And we have moved the fence line of the project westward to avoid that archaeological site, although the property line does go through it. So let's go to the next. Taking a closer look at the landscape character to see some of these features, you can see the croplands looking towards the forest. Those croplands are going to remain in large measure and are going to become, continue to be part of the important views of the site. The open meadow with the tree clusters is part of what we're looking at as an influencer of the new landscape that will be developed. Let's go to the next. And a very special place, which is the wet meadow that I mentioned to you, the area near the wetlands at the southeast, which has a number of unique trees in it, a hickory, several hickories that are rather rare to the region, and an understory of sedges and rushes and grasses that's different from the meadow that you see on the right, which is the bulk of the site. And then there are places where there are copse's of trees, you can see in the distance, which are powerful elements in the landscape that we are also going to be looking to as influences of a new design. Let's go to the next. Here you see an air photo of the site. And for those of you who know the A.D. Taylor Plan from 1934, these are remnants of the plan, very clearly visible on Taylor's plan and visible today. Of course, the building's in a state of disrepair and near collapse and overgrowth, as Chuck mentioned earlier. And the road pattern is something that also will be influencing the way passage is conducted around the edge of the site. And we do anticipate a mitigation program for the understanding of some of these historic resources. And the Section 106 program has already been ongoing in a fairly robust manner conducted by USAES. Let's go to the next. So site amenity and restoration opportunities are things that we're looking at. One of my firm's projects at the National Arboretum on the top left gives you a sense of what we visualize as a major piece of the way of covering the ground on this site, where we have meadowlands, but we also are mowing the verges, suggesting mowing the verges, and then the other pieces of design that you just saw. A little culvert on the lower left, and then opportunities to restore wetlands and streams in partnership with our project civil engineer. Back to SOM and the CCT team. Thank you.
Thanks, Faye. Okay, Carlton, next slide, please. So we've engaged now with Chuck and leadership at BEP for almost a year now. And one of the first things we did after touring the western facility in Texas and of course, the DCF facility, to sort of contextualize the challenges that they've been faced with, is to establish guiding principles. And we think many of these are aligned with the NCPC guiding principles. And I'll focus on two. Institutional identity, number four, which is to design the building and site to blend in with the community and communicate environmental sustainability to the neighbors and staff and people who come to visit this facility. And then, of course, number nine, sustainability in the built environment. Very important. Treasury has an opportunity here, which is consistent with their strategic plan to be a steward of the environment. And that's what this project is fostering as well. Next slide, please. So there are many options. This is all about compact development, which again, is consistent with NCPC, and that led us to Scheme C. And just very briefly, the entry off of the south, off of Powder Mill Road, you see the blue block that is basically lab-supporting manufacturing and office administrative space. The core of the project, of course, is the manufacturing component, which is the orange. To the upper left is the Federal Reserve Vault, where the final product is stored for delivery throughout the world. Upper right-hand corner is all warehouse and storage of paper and products. And then the gray block is the central utility plant, a little over a million square feet on one level. Next slide, please. And this is the concept plan. And just very quickly, if you enter off of Powder Mill Road from the south, in the middle, you have staff entry coming through a compound access control building. And they will make their way to either the southern parking surface to the south of the building, or turn to the right and go to the northeast, which is the second parking surface. About 1,190 stalls, all that surface. The production vehicular traffic is all screened through this truck screening building here. Quite large, two semi-trucks will be screened completely internal to the building. After vetted by security, they'll proceed north, turn west, and then proceed further up to the north to the loading facility at the north end. The setback of the northern edge of the building is approximately over 800 feet from the actual street at Odell Road. And it's quite naturally screened by the forest stand here to the north that Faye mentioned. So we're taking advantage of that, both for visual as well as acoustical. as well as acoustical screening of the facility. The cornfields off to the west, you can see here. What we're doing is, of course, this is a highly secure compound, so we're using an ornamental open fence around the perimeter. Very important to maintain visual continuity throughout the environment. And you see these two access roads, which are built into these berms. These are natural berms. We do have a balanced cut and fill for the entire site. And we're taking advantage of that to screen the building from all sides using these berms. And these are access roads into the facility to allow future interchangeability of currency equipment throughout the life of the facility. And then off to the right is another screening building for scheduled visitor tours. This will be for select school groups, et cetera. A limited number, highly controlled by BEP, to convey and communicate the important mission that they serve for the federal government in the production of their currency banknotes. The eastern forest, you can see to the right, is actually woven through the surface parking. This is very important as part of our sustainability approach to mitigate stormwater management and to reduce the heat island effect, to create a much more welcoming environment, and to promote a direct connectivity between staff and visitors with the historic context that is Bark, which is really quite rich and quite beautiful when you go to the site. There is a green roof here, this building. You're looking at about 20 acres. And we've got approximately 40% of this is a green roof. Photovoltaic panels are in the center, directly over the manufacturing hall. And right now, we're estimating this will contribute to about 36% of the annual power requirements to run the facility. And that's enough energy, that's 5.1 megawatts. That's enough energy per year to power 1,250 homes. So very sustainable. Next slide, please. Okay, Darrell?
Good afternoon. This slide summarizes the stormwater management strategy for the project, which will be designed in accordance with MDE's environmental site design criteria as well as federal requirements for stormwater management under ESA Section 438. Stormwater management is currently in concept design, but this slide shows the BMPs that are intended to be used for the project. Green roof is intended to be used for about half the main building as well as the majority of rooftop of the other outbuildings. Rainwater harvesting is anticipated to be employed by providing cisterns to collect runoff from the main rooftop for reuse inside the main building. Permanible pavements are intended to be used in parking stalls where appropriate soils are located on site. In addition, reinforced turf, rather than impervious surface, is intended to be used at rarely-used vehicular access areas. Microbioretentions are intended to be used as a primary BMP to treat impervious areas scattered throughout the site and in between parking bays, as was previously mentioned. Bio or grass swales are anticipated to be used along access roads where appropriate. And finally, submerged gravel wetlands or constructed wetland facilities are intended to be used at topographically low corners of the site, typically for treating larger drainage areas. This concludes a summary of the stormwater management strategy. Thank you.
And here is an indicative image of the entry to the facility off of Powder Mill Road after you're cleared. And then you come through the gates and the entry facility. Again, this is all about institutional identity. It's capturing the unique product that is produced here, which is really a very fascinating process. Rich history here. And so this is indicative of capturing the spirit of BEP and ethos that they've represented over the past century. Next slide. And this is the eastern edge of the facility. And it's plus or minus about 45 feet in height. Again, the whole idea is to integrate this as much into the landscape and keep it as low as possible in profile. Off to the right is the surface parking, again, very welcoming. We're looking at very large caliber trees for day-one planting to reduce the heat island effect and such that what you typically see with a large federal organization, a sea of tarmac, we're really doing our best to prevent that from happening here. The natural meadow grasses and ground cover, indicative of this pastoral environment. So, next slide. And this, you know, we'll never see the facility from this vantage point. But this is an image that captures the spirit of the design as it resides today and has an overarching guiding principle for all of us. It's always been thought of as this very unique currency production machine in this pastoral setting. And we're working very hard and diligently with all the stakeholders, including NCPC. This is, I believe, our sixth interaction with staff now. But very excited about this moment for Treasury and to be a part of this once-in-a-lifetime facility. The last one was 106 years ago. And I don't think anyone on this call will ever be involved in a building of this type in their careers again. So, next slide. And then, just very briefly, this is the final slide, the timeline, focused on the red dots. Here we are today for the informational briefing. And, you know, we look forward to listening to you all in April for your concept meeting. And then coming back again in preliminary meeting for 2021. And then final meeting in 2022, about a year from now. So with that, Carlton, thank you.
Sorry about that. My scrolling was a little bit too quick there, sorry. So just to bring it back, I wanted to summarize our comments to the, on the draft EIS and the review process moving forward. I think we've talked about the review process in the last slide. So staff submitted comments for the draft EIS and on December 21, 2020. These comments were based on the project's consistency with the comprehensive plan policies regarding transportation, historic preservation, and natural resources. For transportation, staff reminded the applicant that this was, that this 24-hour production facility will need a parking waiver because it is not intending to meet the 1:2 parking ratio. Staff also wanted to understand the modal split for the existing facility versus the proposed facility. In addition, there were surface parking lots proposed for the project, which is not aligned with the comprehensive plan's policy for to construct structured parking. And then finally, the project does have a visitor component. And we were unsure as to how many visitors were really being expected annually and what that impact might be on the local transportation network. For impacts to historic resources, we were really looking, NCPC is not a signatory for federal projects outside of Washington, DC. But we would like to just understand and possibly propose some mitigation for the memorandum of agreement, which is being developed now. And finally, for natural resources, staff was interested in more fully understanding impacts to wildlife, especially migrating birds, as impacts to other natural resources, such as trees and wetlands, have been documented in the EIS itself. And I think we just went through this review process. I'm not going to go into it again. But we're currently in the information presentation, having a concept design in two months. And then having this project back before us in the fall for preliminary and then next year for the final design. That concludes my presentation. And the, staff is available as well as the applicant to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, and Mr. Davis, and members of the Bureau's team. Before we begin the commission discussion, do any commissioners have questions for the staff or for the applicant? It looks like a lot of questions. Commissioner May.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a bit of impact though. I'm not sure who needs to mute. Okay, that's better. So, yeah, I definitely have questions. Thank you for the very, very detailed presentation. A lot of information. I hope I can remember it for the next time around, so we don't have to go through it all again next time. But I do have questions. The reference to the hybrid solution. Hybrid means moving production out and keeping executive offices in town. Is that the, is that what hybrid means?
Yes, sir. The production, the production right now is currently spread over multiple floors, multiple buildings. And so anything dealing with currency, we plan on moving to this new facility, which includes research and development, because they are involved with security features, involved with touching currency. It's our quality folks. But any administrative functions, such as general counsel, acquisitions, human resources, as well as our executive team, will remain downtown in a, you know, the plan is to eventually renovate our main building downtown, which is a historic building. We will renovate that. We, you know, it's not even in the planning stages right now. It's just concepts. But we anticipate occupying approximately 30% of that building with a remaining public tour in that building. So we will still have that option downtown for people to drop in off of the National Mall. And then the remaining 2/3 of the building would be available for additional federal agencies to consolidate into that space and finalize, you know, their build out of that space.
Okay, well, Matt, you jumped ahead to my next question, which is what happens with the excess space? Because certainly 300 or 400 people are not going to fill that very large building. I will note that it is not just a large building, but a large, high-ceilinged building. And it is an incredible location. And it's the sort of space that might well be suited to, say, a new museum. And there are new museums that have been proposed by the Congress or that have been approved by the Congress. And maybe this building could be included in consideration or the 2/3 of it that would be available. Or, I don't know, what else? We'll see what happens.
So there is also, so there's two structures that make up the DC facility. It's the main building, which we are going to keep, and the annex building, which is across the street and connected by an underground tunnel. That building, we have plans to basically just surplus the GSA. And so we've heard from GSA in the past, talk about different options. And, you know, one of them has been potentially, you know, working with the Smithsonian. But that would be outside of this effort and would be, you know, further explored down the road.
Right, yeah. And I'm not asking you to orchestrate the movement of new museums into your former space.
Yeah.
For the benefit of the commission and the staff. And I'm sure they've already thought of these things, so. But I just want to, you know, I'd like to make that public because it's such a grand building. And it is, you know, it was, for a very long time, a very popular tourist attraction. I don't know the extent to which it is that now. So we'll, yeah, we'll see how that, how that will play out ultimately. I do have a couple of other questions. First of all, you know, I was curious about how it wound up at USDA. And I'm glad that the, or at the Bark. And I'm glad that USDA supports it so enthusiastically. I think that's, that's always good to hear. And I'm also glad that RFK was not considered, or at least taken off the list at some point. Because that's actually parkland. And, you know, you would have had to talk to us. I'm not sure we would have supported that in the first place. I mean, it is under leased to the district government, but it's, it is technically still parkland. And I do appreciate that, you know, one of the things that really makes sense to me in this site selection, and I don't recall enough about how it all happened, although I was, you know, aware of it happening on some level, is the fact that the location, the location of the operation is moving to a location that's close or closer to the staff of the agency. So the people who have to go there, being in closer proximity, I think, is just very smart. I mean, it's, you know, not quite live near your work, but it's, you know, live, people living closer to where they work. I think that that's a positive thing and that's smart planning that should be occurring for all agencies. And unfortunately, doesn't always occur that way. The, I guess the last question I have is, relates to how people will get there. And it, you know, we saw the map with the concentric rings of, you know, how far away things are. And it looked like the Greenbelt Metro Station was a couple miles away. My question is, are you planning on having a shuttle service so that people will be able to get to work by metro? Because I imagine a lot of people who commute that way now.
So to answer your question, yes, we are planning on partnering with USDA on their existing shuttle service and expanding it to support our workforce that can utilize the metro. The reason we do, or the reason we are going to be asking for a waiver in the parking policy is because we are a 24-hour shift operation and we have very stringent requirements on when production staff and support staff have to report to work. And our first shift is at basically 6:00 AM, which is before the metro runs. And so what we're anticipating is most of our production staff will either carpool or arrive on their, you know, on a privately-owned vehicle. And then our more administrative research development people that are assigned to this building will utilize some, you know, the metro more so. And that's just, we can't, the reason for that, and not getting into too many details, the presses don't like to stop running. And so if you don't have operators there and a process.
Explain that any further, I got that.
Okay, thank you.
If you say that the presses have to run 24/7, I'm not going to question that. All right, that's it for my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Tublud.
I just want to build on this, which I think will then build into my, into my discussion later. But, so just to be clear, I heard the 300 to 400 in DC will remain. What's the number that, is it, did you give a number for how many will be at the Greenbelt location?
We're projecting between contractors and FTE, approximately 1,400 spread over three shifts. So the day shift, the day shift would probably be around 1,000 people. And then the two, the evening and midnight shift, strictly production and quality control, probably around 200 is what we're planning right now. Final numbers have been resolved, but that's what we're building, that's what we're designing the site for right now.
And so, and how many parking spaces?
I believe it's about 1,200 parking spaces because you have, you have the shift overlap. So during shift changeover, you have the incoming shift plus the outgoing shift there for approximately a half an hour at a time. Because they do a high-five at the machines and give a, you know, debrief of what's working, what's not working, the problems that happen during, throughout the day. And so that's what you're running into there. That parking number also includes official visitor parking, you know, GOV parking, and then also for our public tour. So it's not all just, you know, staff.
Okay. And then, I thought, I saw something mentioned, so that's the visitors. You're not having like tourists. The tourists will be downtown. These are, those are the visitors that were mentioned, I think, by Mr. Hart.
We will also have a public tour component of it, but it will be controlled through an online reservation system. Part of our mission is to educate the, educate the public about the security features of our currency. And, you know, the Department of Treasury, all the way up to the previous secretary, is very interested in how we present that information. And so there will be a public tour. We're basically assuming about 30 people at a time. But, you know, it's, it's being set up for institutional, like education, you know, schools coming in, you know, civic groups. But private individuals will also be able to come out. But the main drop-in folks coming, you know, that we're typically have will remain downtown. unless they want to get in a car and drive.
I have lots of thoughts, but those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, this is Linda Argo. I just, I was coming down the same lane here, to use a metaphor, as Andrew and also as Peter. What I heard was 1,190 parking spaces surf all on the one surface lot. Is that correct?
There's a, there's two surface lots. There's a south and an eastern lot.
Okay, with a total of 1,190 spaces?
Joe, can you jump in with the exact number?
Yeah, Commissioner Argo, it's about 1,197 total, including everything that Chuck had mentioned.
Let's call it 1,200. Okay. So, okay, that's what I was trying to get at in terms of looking at that ratio. I understand what you're saying about shifts and all of that business, but, you know, that's and we didn't talk about the composition of that surface and everything, but we deal, we can deal with that next time around. I just wanted to make sure I had, I had those numbers. And there was, and did you say when you were talking to Mr. May, I wanted to be clear about that, that the future considerations would include transportation to Greenbelt Metro?
Commissioner, they would, yes. That's always been our intent. For anybody who could potentially commute through or chooses to commute through the metro, that we would provide a service, a shuttle service back and forth for that day shift operation.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, we are very different than probably 90% of the applicants that you talked to. We are not an office building. We are a manufacturing facility with RSD and, yes. So that's why, that's why Joe had mentioned we're a one of a kind. You'll never, you'll never have us again, so.
Frozen.
So any other questions from our commissioners?
I just want to be sure that when you have your tours, you also talk about your building. Because what you all have done with the green is just spectacular. And to let your tour people know, may not be a big piece of it, but they want to know about the cash production, I'm sure. But this is a beautiful building.
Absolutely, Commissioner Dixon. That is going to be one of the exhibits is the spots of sustainability. And another exhibit will also be on the historic nature of the site. You know, that's one of the things that we're talking with the consultants with the 106 process. And that's something that, you know, we think that the, you know, the public would enjoy knowing, you know, the history of the site. Because it does have a good history of what has happened with poultry research over the last 100 years. And then, like I said, also with the amount of, the amount of effort we're going to, going through with the sustainability of this project deserves to be highlighted, especially in the Greenbelt area. You know, this is part of the green ribbon of DC, you know, the DC National Capital Region. And it's been one of our primary goals all along is to blend in as much as possible, you know. And so that's, that's coming from Treasury through my leadership all the way down.
I also wanted to mention, having had family members who worked in the old building, you know, I hope I will see this one constructed, but it may be a little bit of a push since you're talking about 2028. I was wondering, in the old building, you mentioned the part that you were going to give back to GSA. That, isn't that, wasn't that formerly a savings, a savings bank at one point? Wasn't that a banking facility? I don't make much.
I'm not aware of, you might be thinking of the, across, across from Main Treasury, the Bank of America that's turning into the Museum for American, some, I'm trying to remember what it, the American Dream, something for the American Dream. They're converting that currently. But no, both of these buildings were purpose-built for the Bureau of Engraving and Printing.
Yeah, I know that Frederick Douglass had a bank that was in a similar location, close to the printing office. But that's not the same bank building we're talking about.
Oh, it's not.
Thank you. You're going to get ready to print the new 20 soon, hopefully come off of your shop? Or will it come out of the one that, I guess we want it to come out of the one that's there now, right away?
I know it's being discussed. Not my expertise. I leave that to our operations, folks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, I have a couple for you. I noticed you had in the presentation, the cost estimates from 2017. And I'm just curious, are those cost estimates still holding? And I know you're talking about building in 2028. It was just more curiosity. Are they, are they still accurate largely?
Yes, Commissioner. The estimates were actually escalated to start of construction in 2022. So those prices include escalation through the midpoint of construction. And so the 2017 is just when they were actually prepared and evaluated by the GAO and Congress.
Thank you. And on the parking, obviously, that's going to be a big topic of discussion for us. So I just had a question, you know, and the comment that that isn't a green field, but it is a lot of open space and open fields, and it's a lot of pavement going in. So will there be consideration to ideas of perhaps doing underground parking? I get the tension between you don't want visually the parking in a large, you know, multi-story structure to go above the trees. But are you looking at ways to perhaps go underground and reduce the amount of surface parking?
I'm going to ask Joe to, Joe, your design team.
Thanks, Chuck. Very good question, Commissioner. And we did study structured parking. We studied tiered parking above grade. The soils are so clay that right now there is no sub-basement expected or required by the building program. So that is a significant cost savings for the overall project. And the idea of introducing subterranean parking on the site would really be a cost constraint, a significant cost constraint. Even above-grade tiered parking was estimated to be at least $30 million. So if one were to take that below grade, then of course, we still have the heat island effect. We wouldn't want to put it below grade and not plant over it. So of course, we would want to do that. And by doing that, we're further, you know, you have to go to an amended soil depth. You're just pushing it further, further below grade, incurring significant costs. And we will, we should state, and perhaps we'll get into this further as the design evolves. But the view sheds were very, very critical to Treasury leadership upon entering the facility. Institutional identity was very, very important. And we evaluated the tiered parking relative to the surface parking. And quite honestly, you know, during our first meetings with Carlton, Diane, you know, it was myself who stated that surface parking was not on the table. And we were committed to structured parking. And, you know, through thoughtful, methodical design, we proved to ourselves that for this site, this context, surface parking was much more appropriate. And for a number of reasons, you know, there's, and it had nothing to do with cost. It was, it was the visual, it was the, the surface runoff. It seems as though in Montgomery and Prince George's County, we're getting 50-year rainstorms every, every five years. So that was prevalent in our thinking. So those bial swales that are planted in between these dry aisles, they're not aspirational. We're, we're working very, very hard to make sure that they sustain the budget throughout the design of this project.
Well, that's, that's very helpful. And I am sure there will be many, many more discussions about parking and how you try to resolve the issue. And, you know, there are lots of things that people are doing with surface parkings with permeable solutions. So I'll be, we'll be tracking that one closely, as you can imagine, as well as the transportation management plan. And then I have a final question, just out of curiosity for to, for sort of the industry of printing cash and thinking about, this is really for the Bureau, but how is it impacting the need to create, the type of facility you're creating, the idea that we're using less and less cash as a society? So how do you account for that in terms of the print production and what you need in the physical plant of a building? I know we're not a cashless society, nor are we a paperless society, which people predicted by this time. But I'm just very curious about the impact of so many ways to have transactions without cash.
So this isn't exactly my, my, my area of expertise, but I'll give you a high level. You know, from, from my understanding, from my leadership is there's, there's two things going on. First of all, I'll tell you, right now, we're shipping records amount of currency. Anytime there's a crisis in the world, anywhere in the world, obviously, we're going through one right now. We, you know, folks, folks turn to something they can feel and hold on to. The demand literally just skyrocketed. We have been working 24 hours a day. We have not shut down because of COVID. We have essential workers working, you know, to produce currency. Long term, the way it's been explained to me, you know, while, while the percentage of currency transactions continues to track, you know, down slightly every, every, you know, several years, the global economy keeps growing. And so the amount of notes in circulation keeps increasing. You know, even though it's a smaller percentage of the pie, the numeric amount of currency in circulation worldwide is just going through the roof. We have over 2 trillion notes in circulation right now, and it's the most it's ever been. So, you know, we've had some of these conversations and had these same questions during the draft EIS process. And we're going to provide some information to further back that up. But our customer, our customer is the Federal Reserve. They are basically asking us to ship as much as we can manufacture. And so long term, we feel like this, they would not be paying for this facility if they didn't see a long-term need in the next 50 to 100 years for cash to continue. Because this is a non-appropriated project from Congress. They, they had to provide us authority to utilize funding provided from the Federal Reserve Board for this facility, which we received. But the Federal Reserve is obviously the one paying the bills and funding this project. So they are very supportive of it.
Thank you. Fascinating. So I will now open it up to the commission for discussion and start with Commissioner Trueblood. We'll go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. And so please keep your webcams on during the discussion. So Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you. Thank you for that. As a former Treasury employee, I appreciate Bureau of Engraving and Printing, a fellow bureau. I was, I was at Main Treasury, but I did get a tour, so I appreciate that. I guess I'm going to maybe keep it short. I think, you know, overall, this site plan seems fine, you know, it seems like a good project. It seems like, very much like 21st century manufacturing needs. I guess what I would say is, I would say that and sort of like 20th century site planning. Like, oh, let's put a big old building on, literally in a place called Greenbelt, like on a greenfield site in a greenbelt with a giant, with a giant surface parking lot. And I just think it goes against, like, everything, you know. So now, you know, apart from the moving of employees out into the district, which is, I think, something that we see as problematic generally from the district perspective, I'll bring my, I'll put on my hat from the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments and from the Transportation Planning Board, the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, that we're trying to get jobs and people to live, to be closer together, not farther apart. Farther apart creates more congestion. But most importantly, and what I think really disturbs me about this, and maybe this is more a note to NCPC to think about this moving forward on site planning, is like, you know, that we're, we're, we're creating much more of a carbon footprint. People are going to, more cars are going to have to go further to do this. You know, I feel like oftentimes our NEPA focuses so much on the site and the site mitigations. And even the parking ratios, which I know we just put into place or we put into place with the new transportation element, sort of assume, well, if you're not near metro, you can have a two to one ratio, not making the case for the fact that you should be near the metro or high-capacity transit or an activity center. And so I just think it really, I would really maybe ask the commission to think about that, about how we can weigh in and really push, you know. I know we just, you know, the district has been a part of C40 in the United States, just rejoined the Paris Climate Accord, which talks about significant reductions in carbon. And I don't think, I'd be interested to know if there is a study around this, around the impacts of this. But I would imagine this does not help reduce carbon. And I just think, you know, the discussion about parking is like, every time, there's an excuse about why they can't meet the ratio, why it needs to be surface parking. My idea, we shouldn't have any part, we should have, if you're not carpooling, you don't get to be there. Because this is like, this climate change, you mentioned, you mentioned that these 500-year or 150-year storms are happening all the time. Well, it's because we keep putting jobs further out and then creating more carbon impact and more climate change. So I just, you know, I know this has gone, this one is a little bit unique. It's a production facility, which I recognize. And it's, you know, it's already been cited. But I just maybe more am asking, implore the commission to think about how we can really not get this down here, down this far and have to accept this because it's problematic. Final point is I will, you know, and this gets to what Commissioner May said about living near where you work. I think there's a lot of opportunity to think about that in all of the citing decisions. And RFK is parkland. It's also parking lots. And I think it's interesting to note that, you know, there are places in the, in the region that aren't greenfields that could be potential. So, you know, RFK, we, you know, it is, it's not, it's neither here nor there right now. But I just, you know, it just, it just, it's disappointing. I think it's disappointing. I'll say on that. So thank you for the presentation. Like I said, I like the building and good luck. I look forward to seeing how, how this goes through the process.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. And those are really thoughtful comments about the dilemma of site planning and something I look forward to us discussing further. So Commissioner May, do you have further comments for discussion?
Sure. So I have to say, well, I am generally of the same camp as Commissioner Trueblood when it comes to how we treat the location of buildings and the concerns, the broader consideration of how buildings are located. I don't think this is really a terrible example because I think this is one of those things that is happening downtown. It made sense when it was built to be downtown, but now it doesn't make sense for it to be downtown. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of the concern about how people get there and what can be done to make that, you know, that component of this production facility work better and be better for the environment. But I think that overall, the metropolitan area is better served by having this kind of a facility located in an area where it is, you know, more easily accessible by the trucks that have to bring in the stuff to make the money. And, you know, we will have to do our best to make sure that how people get there to run this facility is done in a responsible way. And I think, you know, repurposing the building downtown will be, I think, a huge benefit to the city in particular in the long run. So it's the sort of thing that should be downtown, whereas some things need to be out in the suburbs.
I take it Commissioner Trueblood has a response to that.
Well, can I just agree? Commissioner May, I don't, you know, I understand, like, this, this, I totally get the point about this needs a modern production facility. I guess all I'm saying is, I think if you look within the region, there are maybe opportunities to do more, you know, less, less environmentally impactful citing. That's all. I don't, I'm not arguing that this has to be, I don't think it can be in the existing facility. So I'm with you on that.
Yeah, yeah. And I know you weren't arguing for it to be at RFK either. There are better things to be done at RFK. I think we all would agree with that. I think we all would agree with that.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Any, any further comments on the project? I didn't want to cut you off. Commissioner May, any further comments on the project?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, I would echo the comments of the previous commissioners made, and just, you know, and emphasize again that, that 1,200 parking space number, you know, picturing the, you know, an asphalt, asphalt field with 1,200 spaces, I'm not saying that's what it is, is, you know, is I think where we are in our, in our evolution on this, on this whole business of, of, you know, vehicular movement and, and parking facilities is probably unacceptable, and would need to, you know, would need to see some refinement in that, you know, in that area, let's just put it that way. So, other than that, I agree particularly also that the, that the location makes sense, and pulling a lot of the workers, putting a lot of the workers closer to where they're likely to be coming from, makes a lot of sense as well, but there clearly needs to be some refinement in terms of how they get there.
Thank you. So Commissioner Dixon.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
So I just want to associate myself with a lot of what Commissioner Trueblood said, but I wanted to add a little bit as well. So, I mean, I think that the environmental concerns are really big here on, on a green site like this, and I understand we're probably never going to win a debate on whether or not they're going to have the number of parking places. I get it, they're going to probably get that number, but just because something's out there in, in, in the suburbs and farther away from the city, just because you can and you have the space to put a bunch of parking spaces there, they don't necessarily have to be surface, and maybe you should, should kind of take a cue from some more urban design principles about looking whether you could do some more underground, or a taller, denser parking structure next to it, because otherwise, we're going to end up like the, the issues we've had like down at Suitland, where we have these big parking lots, and after they're there, it's a lot harder to make them go away. So if you can design it on the front end and incorporate some of that, preserve more green space, which will help minimize some of the carbon footprint and the, and the heat sink effects, I just think that's a real opportunity when you're citing a new, a new facility like this, when we're in a, a time where we have a real consciousness about environmental, what we can do to, to help the environment, I think that making that investment on the front end is better, because otherwise, we're just going to have that surface parking, we'll never be able to get rid of it. So I just want to emphasize, just because you can, doesn't mean you should. But other than that, I agree with some of the points that Commissioner May and Commissioner Argo made with, maybe this is a better site for it, and I definitely agree with it, doesn't necessarily need to be in the city, but I just really encourage the, the team to, to take a look at what they can do to mitigate things on the front end, so that 20 years from now, when you add that second building, we're not back here.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Ginsburg.
I have no additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this was a very informative presentation and discussion on many levels, and we look forward to future presentations. So now, we will move to Agenda Item 7B, which is also an information presentation on the master plan for the Food and Drug Administration Merkirk Road Campus. Ms. Free will be giving the presentation, so welcome, Ms. Free.
Yes, thank you, and good afternoon, Commissioners. The purpose of today's information presentation is to introduce the Commission to the Food and Drug Administration Merkirk Road Campus, or the MRC, its purpose, and the goals of the master plan, which is currently in the early scoping stages. I will begin the presentation with a brief introduction, then play a virtual tour of the site. Following the tour, Shelley Jones, who is a Senior Community Planner with the General Services Administration's Office of Planning and Design Quality for the Region, will present a summary of the project and the master plan campus. I will then summarize NCPC staff's Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, scoping comments, which were issued in a letter to GSA on January 13th of this year, and then I will conclude the presentation with the anticipated next steps. The MRC is located near other federal facilities in Prince George's County, including the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center and the Bureau of Engraving and Printing's proposal, proposed currency production facility that you just heard about. The MRC is also located approximately eight miles east of the FDA's primary headquarters at the White Oak Campus in Silver Spring, Maryland. The Commission reviewed the, reviewed and approved the master plan for the White Oak Campus in December of 2018. It's our understanding that the FDA's primary mission is to protect the public health by ensuring the safety, efficacy, and security of human and veterinary drugs, biological products, and medical devices. The MRC supports this mission with research facilities and laboratories to conduct research on these matters. These facilities are dispersed across the main campus between forested stream valleys and multiple pastures. So now, we will play a virtual tour of the campus that was prepared by GSA for this presentation, and as I mentioned earlier, Ms. Jones will provide a presentation following the tour.
FDA Merkirk Road Campus is located near Kirk and Odell. The 247-acre site is owned by FDA. FDA acquired the land for the Beltsville.
Seems we may have another technical glitch here.
Let's give it just a minute, I think Tony can try to restart it, and if not, if we can plan on just moving forward with the rest of the presentation. There we go.
Near Kirk and Odell. The 247-acre site is owned by FDA. FDA acquired the land for the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center from the Department of Agriculture in 1964. Today, it is home for the Center for Veterinary Medicine and the Center for Food Safety and Applied Nutrition. The 1966 Site Development Plan and the 1981 Beltsville Master Plan have been approved by the National Capital Planning Commission in Prince George's County. The site is divided by two parcels on either side of Odell Road. The larger 195-acre west parcel is home to the Beltsville Research Center and is located in the northeast corner of the site. The east parcel is subdivided into three smaller parcels that include the Maryland Army National Guard and the South Laurel Pumping Station. The remainder of the east parcel is undeveloped woodlands, fully covered by trees and bisected by stream valleys. The site is located within the larger DC metropolitan area, about 16 miles north of Washington and 34 miles south of Baltimore. The Merkirk Road Campus is 6.6 miles east of FDA's headquarters at White Oak and 7.9 miles north of FDA's College Park Campus. While technically part of the city of Laurel, the campus is in a semi-rural suburban area of Prince George's County. The campus is mostly surrounded by undeveloped land designated as reserved open space, with a couple of relatively small, low-density residential neighborhoods to the north and This slide shows a close-up of the areas considered for development. The main entry gate is at Merkirk Road, indicated by the white arrow. The curving dashed red line indicates the road to the Beltsville Research Center, which runs through a wooded area. The BRF site includes the original buildings from the 1960s. The dashed white line at the south end of the BRF indicates the fence that separates the pasture to the south from the BRF. More recent buildings have been added just south of the main entry gate. Module 1 was built in the 1980s, Module 2 in the 1990s. These two buildings are referred to as Mod 1 and Mod 2. There is a large surface parking area to the west of Mod 1 and Mod 2. The lower site holds the research facility that includes labs for open pastures. There are four points of entrance onto the campus. Gate 1 at Merkirk Road is the main entrance. Gate 2 at Odell Road, across from the National Guard, is currently closed. Gates 3 and 4 leads to the research facility and the pastures. Slide 5 shows the main entrance at Merkirk Road with a bus stop. The shoulder of the road has limited space for biking coming from the west, but it does not continue to the east. There are no sidewalks east or west of the main entrance. A wooded area forms the physical and visual boundary between the campus and the residential buildings to the north. View 1 is taken from Mod 1, looking back at the guardhouse at the main entrance. Views 2 and 3 show Mod 1 and the main building entrance. This slide shows the road that leads to the BRF and the BRF main building, and a close-up of the building entrance. This slide shows the BRF loading dock with a view to the yard beyond, a view of the Maryland Army National Guard Building across Odell Road, and a view looking south to the road towards the rear yard of the BRF. This angled view looking northwest of the road at the covered walkways. Please take a note of the woods beyond, as this is emerging as a key focal point for future development. This image is a panoramic view looking north, back towards the main BRF building and the wooded buffer between the BRF and Merkirk Road and beyond. This slide returns us to Mod 1, and takes us to the west corner of the large surface parking lot shown on the right side. Slide 12 shows Mod 2 directly ahead and Mod 1 to the left with a loading dock area and an outdoor picnic area for employees. This slide shows the gate to the research area and the road that leads to the pastures. Final slide is of pasture D, south of the BRF. We did not tour the site beyond this pasture, as the southern portion of the campus is not available for development.
So that concludes the virtual tour, and now we will hand it off to Ms. Jones to make her presentation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good afternoon, Vice Chair White, Commissioners, and NCPC staff. We appreciate the opportunity to provide an overview of the proposed FDA Merkirk Road Campus, also known as MRC, master plan to you. The project is in the earliest ages, and we'd like to get your feedback. Again, my name is Shelley Jones, I'm a Senior Community Planner with GSA and the Project Manager for the project. Hopefully, the virtual tour you just witnessed has provided you with a glimpse of the MRC campus. For additional background, FDA approached GSA to assist them in preparing the MRC master plan. The master plan is a part of a larger and continuing effort to guide FDA in consolidating employees onto the federal property. As you may remember, the FDA White Oak Master Plan was approved and presented and approved by the Commission in 2018. This master plan will provide a flexible framework for how future development can occur and aid FDA in making their consolidation decisions. Additionally, the last MRC master plan was completed and improved in 19, in the 1980s. So it is important that a new plan be developed to consider current conditions and requirements and criteria, as well as anticipate future criteria and mandates. Next slide, please. Currently, we're in the scoping phase, which will end next Thursday, February 11th, and we will submit the draft master plan, the draft EIS, and the TMP in June for the 90-day intergovernmental review, and then present the draft master plan to the Commission at the September meeting. It's anticipated that the final master plan will be completed mid to late 2020, or earlier if possible. Next slide, please. Currently, MRC has a total of 480,000 gross square feet of laboratory and offices and houses 300 employees. This master plan proposes an additional 450,000 gross square feet and to house an addition of 1,500 employees. This would bring the total for the campus built space to 938,000 gross feet, gross square feet, excuse me, and a population of up to 1,800 employees to be accomplished in two phases. Phase 1 would add approximately 700 employees and could occur as early as four to five years. Phase 2 would add an approximate 800 employees and will occur over the next 20 years, for a total of 1,800 employees. Next slide, please. The next two slides will give you a glimpse of the vision and guiding principles that have been established for the future development of the MRC. They focus on four key areas. I won't read them thoroughly, but we'll just touch on the highlights. The first is image and mission. It's to reinforce FDA's image as a leading scientific institute, foster employee retention and attraction. Number two is economics, to create a more efficient and cost-effective agency. Next slide, please. Environmental stewardship. Protect the site's tree canopy, maintain biodiversity, minimize runoff, and create a sustainable complex. And the last is transportation, to foster effective transportation solutions to minimize traffic and parking, reinforce the innovative existing policies. Next slide, please. As you can see, the draft area of potential effects includes both the west and east parcel of the FDA property. Consultation has been initiated with the Maryland Historical Trust. The draft determination of eligibility will be submitted within days, and we will be conducting consulting party meetings in the near future. Next slide, please. We'll move quickly through the next two slides, you've seen much of this in the virtual tour, but again, it just gives you an example of the architecture that's currently out at the facility now. Next slide. And this area provides quite a bit of information. I won't go over much of it, I think in previous slides and, and the BEP presentation, you may have seen something similar, but what I do want to bring attention to is, is as you look at the slide, you see a decided difference in contrast and, and density. The areas closest to the MRC campus, you see quite a bit of tree coverage. So I'd like to move on to the next slide. And in this slide, you can see that we have zoomed in closer to the campus, and you can see, you can definitely see that density contrast between the residential area, the Amundale area, and the green areas surrounding the MRC campus on the campus and, and more towards the right. Also, it highlights the transportation network. The Mark Merkirk Station on the Camden Line is just under a mile from the Merkirk MRC entrance. Likewise, you'll see the blue line, or the blue dotted line, you'll notice that that is the Maryland Transit Authority's Route 302. This bus runs directly in front of the Merkirk Campus on Merkirk Road, and there is a bus stop at the front entrance of the campus. Next slide, please. In 2017, the MRC land use feasibility study was produced simultaneously with the 2017 FDA White Oak Land Use Feasibility Study and the FDA White Oak Master Plan as a part of FDA's comprehensive consolidation effort. The goal of the MRC Land Use Feasibility Study was to identify available land for the future development and determine the campus's capacity for future development. And if you look at this slide and, and notice the gold areas, those areas are, were identified as potential land, developable land bays, and we'll be focusing primarily on the Mod 1 and Mod 2 and the BRF developable. and the BRF developable sites. Next slide, please. As a result of the land use feasibility study, these three strategies were concluded. The first strategy is a low-intensity development strategy, and it was to house approximately 550 people. And if you notice that all of the development is located on the BRF site. The medium-intensity strategy was for approximately 1,100 people. It also is focused on the BRF site. And moving on to the third strategy, the high intensity, was for approximately 3,800 people. And the BRF site and the east parcel, which is currently undeveloped forest land, was looked at for potential development. I think it's interesting to note that in the 1966 and in the 1981 approved site development and master plans, that the proposed development on both of those plans was for the mod one and mod two area, the BRF site, and the east parcel. And the maximum for both of those plans was for 1,800 people. Next slide, please. For this master plan, the proposed development area will be the mod one area and the BRF site. The undeveloped east parcel is not being considered at this time for development. Next slide, please. The MRC master plan will consider four alternatives. What you see before you now is the no-build alternative. There are also three development alternatives that we will venture into next. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the three development alternatives and gives, it shows some commonalities and some contrasting elements for each. I'll focus on the commonalities for this particular slide, and as we move to the individual alternatives, I'll speak more about the differences. So some of the common elements for the three alternatives is that the new space is approximately 458,000 gross square feet, which will be offices and shared amenity spaces. And some of those shared amenity spaces are elements such as cafeterias, trucks, screening facility, visitor center, conference room, and fitness areas. Next slide, please. So this is the concept diagram for the conceptual development alternative. We call this one the compact campus. Because it is, all of the new development, office development, excuse me, is being concentrated on the mod one and mod two site, which means it integrates the existing facilities and the new buildings. So item number one, what you'll see is a pedestrian connection between the mod one and two area and the BRF site, which is where you see the parking structures and other amenities. And number two, the dark green area is a natural landscape amenity space, which will be common between all of the elements as well. That will come into focus later on. And the third is a central campus landscape space. And number four, four actually is a restored natural area currently. Where the proposed building in area four is, is a surface parking lot. And so the idea is that we will investigate possibility of restoring some of that parking area to natural state. Next slide, please. So some key elements for the alternative A. This alternative concentrates all the new development on the mod one and mod two. It locates all the new parking on the BRF site. And as you can see, we have two structured parking garages. It is the most destructive, disruptive, excuse me, disruptive during construction, mainly because on the mod one area where the office, the seven-level office building is, as I mentioned earlier, is an existing parking lot. So a temporary lot would have to be built on the BRF site. It also adds one entrance to the Odell Road. There's an existing entrance there now. It's currently closed, so that entrance would be open and could be utilized by employees, trucks, as well as visitors. And it also requires more new roadways than alternative B, which you'll see in a little, little bit, and less than alternative C, which you'll see thereafter. Next slide, please. So this is concept, the concept diagram for alternative B. We call this the dual campus because it distributes the new development between mod one and the BRF sites. And again, you see the pedestrian connection between the two through the woodland in the element two, which is the natural amenity. And item three, you see two campus landscape areas. Next slide, please. So in this, this alternative, again, it is, you have development on the BRF, on the mod one site. The mod one would be the phase one development. You've got an office building, and you also have a parking structure as well as the visitor center. So it locates all of the new office development, part of the office development on mod one. And as you go over to mod two, to the BRF, excuse me, you also see additional offices. So you've split the two offices, as well as there is a parking structure for those office structures. This particular alternative has a moderate disruption to construction, again, because we will be building a new building on mod one and a parking structure. So again, a temporary parking, surface parking would have to be constructed on the BRF site. It adds more impervious surfaces than A, but less than C. And it adds one new entrance. The same gate would be reopened on the Odell Road. But it has the least new internal roadways. Next slide, please. And this is our final alternative. This is alternative C. And it, excuse me, it is called the northeast campus, and it's reimagining the BRF site. And as you'll notice, element one and two, again, is the natural landscape amenity, which is a wetland area and heavily wooded area with a pedestrian path between the two. Again, you see a central landscape space between the offices and the BRF site. And number four, again, a opportunity to restore the existing surface parking lot to a natural area. Next slide. So this alternative, again, concentrates all the development on the BRF site. So phase one and phase two would occur here. And it locates all of the new parking in, on the BRF site, too. And the parking would be phased, so one half, and then you would have a combined parking structure at the phase two development. This alternative is the least destructive, disruptive during construction because you're restoring, you can continue to use the existing surface parking lot, and you're, at one point, will restore that lot. It adds the most impervious surface. And this one adds two new entries from the Odell Road and involves the most new internal roadways. Next slide, please. Now, as you've seen, the MRC has a definite pastoral nature, natural landscape, and balancing the built and the natural environment will be key on this campus. To help achieve that balance, a few landscape precedents have been identified. These photos illustrate some elements from the Glenstone Museum in Potomac, Maryland, and the University of Pennsylvania Shoemakers Green in Philadelphia. Some of the elements from those campuses that we will, that will serve as inspiration for our master plan include natural and natural amenity feature, woodland trails, wetland boardwalks, rain gardens and native species, and natural transitional space between the old and new campus, and informal outdoor spaces. Next slide. So our final slide is, just to give a brief overview on parking. Currently, there are 310 surface parking spaces on the campus, most of which are on the mod one and mod two sites. We're proposing 950 spaces, which will be for employees and visitors. And it's proposed for each of, proposed within each of the development alternatives. So that's a consistent. The parking will be on a one to two ratio, or one parking space for each employee. With a proposed population of 1,800, that's 900 parking spaces for employees and 50 parking spaces for visitors. This ratio is based on the Comprehensive Plan's federal transportation element for campuses within the suburban area beyond metro, which applies to the MRC. And as you can see, the breakdown between phase one and phase two. Phase one would, we would have approximately 1,000 people on campus, and so that would be 550 spaces. Phase two would add an additional 800 employees for a total of 1,800 employees, for a total of 950 parking spaces. And that concludes my presentation, and I want to thank you for your time and look forward to your feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. So now I will briefly summarize NCPC staff's EIS scoping comments that were issued to GSA last month. The comments identify policies from the Comprehensive Plan for the National Capitol to further guide development of the alternatives. These comments primarily relate to the urban design, federal workplace, transportation, and environment elements. The comments also identify topics that require further analysis in the draft EIS in order to understand the impacts of the proposed alternatives. In summary, the urban design comments encourage GSA to consider grouping building functions and to pursue compact development oriented around common landscape space. Further, staff notes the recent and forthcoming updates to the transportation, environment, and workplace elements as these will help to shape the alternatives. Amongst others, the comments related to these elements recommend that the applicant's balance security requirements with locational considerations, improve regional mobility, and incorporate environmentally sustainable elements such as renewable energy sources early on in the planning process. The comments also include guidance regarding outreach to state and local jurisdiction agencies and consideration of potential historic resources and local planning initiatives for the area. And the remaining scoping comments ask the applicant to evaluate the impacts between the proposed action and the no-action alternatives, which include several topics for evaluation that relate back to the Comprehensive Plan policies. So next steps include preparation of the draft EIS and master plan. The Commission's review of the draft master plan is planned for fall of 2021, and GSA anticipates review of the final master plan and the Record of Decision in mid to late 2022. I'll note here that staff originally recommended that GSA provide a second informational presentation to the Commission once the alternatives were further developed and prior to GSA's selection of a preferred alternative. However, through additional coordination with GSA following issuance of the letter, GSA confirmed that they intend to include this information for review in the draft master plan, which will occur prior to selection of a preferred alternative. So therefore, a second informational presentation is no longer necessary. So this concludes my presentation. I'd like to encourage the Commissioners to take this opportunity to ask questions about the campus, the master plan goals, et cetera. Ms. Jones and I are available for questions. And Alina Garrison, Marar Ibrahimee, and Andrew Dempster with FDA are also on the line, as well as Rob Hendrick from the applicant's consultant team, CRTKL, is on the line as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Free and Ms. Jones, for that very complete presentation. Before we begin any commission discussion, do any of the Commissioners have questions for the staff or the proponent? Hearing no questions, I'm going to open it up now for the Commission to have discussion, and I will start with Commissioner Trueblood, and then go in a round robin format. So please keep your webcams on during the discussion. Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you. I think I will, I think I used up most of my oxygen on my last comment, so I will defer to others on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. Commissioner May.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Trueblood used up my oxygen, too. I got nothing left, so.
Commissioner Argov, you got any air?
I have a little air, but I, it's a lot to take in. So I look forward to the, to the next step.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
Well, the presentation, I have nothing to add up to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
No questions or comments. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. So thank you again, Ms. Free and Ms. Jones. I'm sure we'll have lots of discussions about this site. It's a really fascinating site, and the challenges are laid out very well. So thank you very much. This concludes our February 4th commission meeting. Our next regular meeting is on Thursday, March 4th, 2021. This will also be an online meeting, and there is information at www.ncpc.gov on how to view or participate in our online meetings. So Commissioners, please remember to exit the meeting using the last icon on your tools team bar. And if there is no other business to come before the Commission, this meeting is now adjourned. So thank you very much.